Zoom and you're all set.
Super, everybody tells to go.
Move to open the work session.
You're all set.
Nope, to open the work session. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, take it away Jill.
Okay, first our apologies for running so late. Do we have Audrey Decker with us?
She's there, I saw her.
Ah, here you are, Audrey.
Yeah, hi, I'm with Thibault.
Welcome, welcome.
We bring the two funders for the price of one.
Excellent. So this evening, we're going to hear a presentation for for Street Art for Mankind. Audrey and I'm sorry.
Thibault.
Thibault.
Decker. Who are going to present the board a really intriguing and interesting idea they have for bringing street art into into Newcastle into our hamlets. I'm going to turn it over. Thank you. And again, I'm sorry about the late start.
No worries, no worries. So I don't know if basically, yeah, how much time do we have? And does the does the team know a little bit about that work or should we first present a little bit more about about that work before we dive into the into the?
Why don't you give us an overview of your work? That would be great.
Okay, and how and how long do we have more or less?
Fifteen, twenty minutes?
Okay, alright, excellent. So yeah, so basically, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We are based in Westchester County. County, we received actually a Best of Westchester for our work in New Rochelle. Last year. So we are really much local, but at the same time very international because we do murals, huge murals all around the world. In particular, I would say with the United Nations, but also with different cities. So if you want me to share my screen, maybe I can share very briefly some of our previous works. Would you like me to do that Jill?
Yes, please do.
Yes.
Alright, so let me. Sure. Security to grant access. I'm not sure if it's going to work. Okay. I'm not sure it's going to let me share. I don't know why. Pleasure of technology, I would say.
Oh, it's definitely open.
Yeah, let me see. Okay, I need to quit and reopen to be able to to share things. So if you give me one second, I'm going to reopen right now.
Sure.
Sorry, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Jeremy, maybe you want to take a second to recap how we heard about them?
Yeah, so Jill and I spoke with them. They're fabulous, obviously talented artists. They bring artists from all over to create these murals. And they address social issues, which is certainly something that's important to this town. But they also help bring feet on the ground because they make it a destination and an interesting location where people come and see things, not just the boring and mundane gray that we see in in many places. So it's exciting. I don't want to steal their thunder. They certainly know more than I do, absolutely. So I'll let them speak. But they seem really like something that this town could really get behind.
Yeah, and I know.
There's a financial commitment too. There's a financial commitment to that the town would either have to bear or private property owners would have to bear because they are paying for these artists. It includes, I think they said, for even hotel and food, it's an all-inclusive price. So, but they can certainly share that further.
Yeah. I'm excited to hear about that.
Beautiful. Yeah, what was interesting is that as far as the topics go of what the murals would be of is something that they involve the community in. So the community is involved from the very start. So I just thought the whole idea of community buy-in and involvement was just very, very interesting. Yep.
So.
Hi, so we're back. So hopefully.
As Audrey will be opening her presentation, maybe I'll give you a bit more insight on who we are. Just in case it takes long.
No, I think we should define.
So I won't have to talk then.
Yeah. So yeah, very, very briefly, because so basically, yeah, we are an art for social change organization, especially street art. So we've huge, huge murals. So we work with over a hundred artists from all around the world. And I would say we have series together related to the United Nations and all the Sustainable Development Goals. So that's one type of things we do. And the second thing is really working with cities to highlight the DNA of the cities. And we did it, for example, in New Rochelle. We're going to do it in Houston. We did it in Chateau, which is the Impressionist cradle in France, et cetera, et cetera. That's more where we are for today.
I mean, a few cities actually across quite, quite close from you.
So that's some of our achievements, but I don't think we need that. White Public Heart, I think that obviously, you know how Public Heart inspire people. And they really trigger action, they trigger interest in in the street for people to see. And that's what we love is that people don't need to go inside the museum, but we bring the inspiration of art to them outside. And we really considered, I would say, street art, not per se in a sense of this was born in the eighties, et cetera. But more really like basically that technology allowed to to take the art that was created since the age of time. And maybe even they take the seventeen, the eighteen, the nineteen.
Excuse me, I think the presentation is not showing properly. We're just getting a white screen right now. So, sorry.
Okay.
Can you see, can you see right now or not?
I see your pointer moving. Sometimes you have to make sure that you choose the right window.
Right now it'd be on the right.
Okay, let me do it again. Sorry, wait a minute.
So, as Audrey then shares, thank you for the the presentation. So yeah, we are about creating what we call series of murals that we link together to create artworks. So the purpose of our murals is really to talk to all generations and to be out there. So it's positive murals, it's inspiring murals that people are drawn to. And thanks to an app that we developed, which is actually a mounted reality app, we link those murals together and bring additional content. Can you see the the visuals right now?
It's great.
Yeah, you see the visual now? Great.
Beautiful.
Sorry. We use this app actually to connect walls together and bring additional content for people. Actually, as they will be visiting with an audio guide, I would say, in a museum. So as Audrey was explaining, our concept is more of a open, it's an outdoor museum. Where we bring diversity of art to speak to various people and to make sure that actually everybody has kind of its piece out there that actually speaks to them. And the idea for us is to work with you guys to curate, in a sense, what values you want to talk about. And what is inspiring, I would say, in the city can be sometimes even linked to history. That's what we did also in Larchmont. To bring that all together and create that story and that narrative that actually people will find afterwards with a piece of art. So they're drawn with the art and then they get education, I would say, a bit more actually around it. So this app can have, because it has audio, can have people from the community speaking, it can be officials, it can be, there's a lot of things that we can do. And there's also, if we go to the inspiring part that we do actually with the United Nations. And the rest is, it has the capacity to give to the people the capacity to act. So with links that we have there and the rest, people are able in front of the wall or that image to actually act, just trigger action just immediately in front of the wall. So that's something we will be able to present. So very quickly, this is, this is the the series that we've been doing. Well, the latest ones that you might have seen, the one of New Rochelle here, whether you had eight murals that actually were awarded.
There are here, this is in Chateau, so this is in the Impressionist Island, Impressionist City of Paris. Actually, this one on the bottom right was done on the on the house of André de Rans, which you might know as a very famous post-fouist artist. So it was really on the on the island where Renoir used to paint. And this has all the series we did there. Bringing artists together and meeting with the community as well. So let me go maybe, do you want me to show you again to the visuals or we move directly to our subject of today?
You can, I mean, just show a couple more, but then we can move forward to the subject of today.
Okay, so I mean, more, there was more before this. This is in New York. This is by the United Nations. This is by the UN. This is in Brussels, Italy. This one is about ecosystem restoration, Italy, Brussels, sorry.
No, Jill.
I'm already in Italy. And this is, this one is Mexico City. This one is Paris, Montmartre. And this one also is New York. And this one, they are literally from everywhere. So this one is Auckland. This is the biggest mural of Auckland, a huge with two hundred feet high. This is the biggest mural of Houston. This is a huge mural we did in Detroit. This is the one we did also in New Orleans. They are all for the fight against hunger, this one. And as you can see, it's always about bringing inspiration and positive energy. And that's very important because we really adapt the art to the community and to make sure that everybody is inspired and feel good about it. That's really important. And something else I wanted to show you, just for for your knowledge, is when we really are able to do big artworks, you know, and connect a lot of murals together and it has a lot of meaning, then we also get a lot of press. So that's some examples. CNN covered that several times. UN News, ABC News, PICS, et cetera. So that's some of the coverage we we get. And this is what the partner said, but I guess you can read that. Let us know if you need some recommendations. Yes.
For you guys to be able to.
So that's the first thing I wanted to share with you. So if you have a, do you have a question? And if not, I would go directly to to the presentation, which would be more related to to Chapacqua today.
Okay, so Audrey, I'm sure you're going to follow, I'm sure you're going to cover this in your presentation. But one of the things that's very striking to me about all of your murals is the size and the scale of them. You've been to our town. We clearly are not. That that sort of large canvas for you to be able to work with. Are you going to be able to scale your your artwork down to something that is, you know, appropriate for our hamlets?
Yes, I mean, we do indeed look and very often for very large murals to make a statement specifically with the themes that we're actually talking about. But we do have, I would say, smaller murals. If you go to Larchmont, it's a good example actually, which is close. Or even or even in Marneque, where you have actually less high buildings than actually in New Rochelle, you will find actually murals which are smaller. So in the case, and you'll see it in the presentation that we'll do right now, we've identified already thirty-one walls in Chapacqua. So you might be surprised that we could actually, that we could actually paint and could make actually a great artwork. So afterwards, that's, that's of course, you know, for discussion, I would say. But you do have, I would say, in terms of walls, a sufficient size and location for people to be able to one walk. So create that artwork. And at the same time, a size that actually is sufficient for people to be drawn, I would say, to the image itself. But you'll see it in the rest of the presentation.
Yeah, so basically, this is a concept that we are proposing today, that we can, you know, we can modify, we can tweak. But it's just to give you an idea of what it could be. So we were thinking about proposing a Be the Change, you want to see in the words, a Be the Change artwork, which would be basically an inspirational artwork around human rights and human values. So the idea is really not only to inspire the generation, but also obviously to beautify some of your walls and to raise awareness on the, sorry, my screen is up. Here we go. So raise awareness on on values and human rights and engage also through the app that Thibault was mentioning earlier, which is our Behind the Wall app, that allows the community to speak, the artists to speak and to talk about the city.
We took a bit of a risk to actually kind of, you know, create, I would say, a concept or a theme at this point, which we would of course need to to box the concept with you. And of course, you know, get more of your ideas of what you were imagining. But the idea here is to recall what those murals would bring. The idea is to inspire all generations. The idea is to beautify the places. And you'll see that some of the walls actually could actually qualify in that part. To educate, raise awareness, give also an opportunity, I would say, to the community and to students and the rest to also participate, engage, in a sense. And for that, we will be proposing also kind of a series. So the key elements are really spectacular, inspiring art pieces. We do recommend, you'll see here, that actually you select six plus, I would say, murals, not because we're interested in doing six plus, but mainly because to create an artwork and I would say a walk itself, which is interesting. And we've seen it in smaller communities like Marneque or Larchmont, where the six, six is kind of the minimal size where people really have various themes and have kind of an entertainment, I would say, on that part. Those murals do reactivate food traffic. We have testimonies, if you want, on that from hotels, from a lot of areas where the good thing about it is they stay there, they're a landmark, and afterwards there's an opportunity to have events to and even for for people and businesses who are around, it is people that are walking and that will stop and consume. It's important to recall it specifically, I would say, in a past pandemic, or still in the pandemic anyway, but where people were trying to to bring them back out and to consume for businesses.
And it's really a great opportunity to do a nice inauguration and really get the community united together.
Bring bond the community, meet and greet also with artists. And I think it's it's interesting also on that part. And the inauguration itself is a celebration, which the city, at one point, everybody comes together. And an opportunity, we insist on that, because that's going to be mainly, I would say, on your side, to actually have other arts, which associate very well, I would say, with us to actually display at that time of the time of the inauguration. It's kind of a platform, take it this way, for arts in general, I would say.
Yeah, so local arts as well, local communities, like kids, chorus, like in Larchmont, we had the local chorus who came, this type of thing.
So we went a bit further and actually suggested a few themes that we'll send, so you can actually review them. That's what it could look like, you know. It could be a major theme of protecting our planet. It is COP twenty-six these days, so obviously it did inspire us, obviously. So it can be on green energies, ecosystem restoration, climate change. There's many topics, I would say, out there, which are also linked to SDGs. So there's a few, a few cities that actually work with us, which today are also themselves very implicated, I would say, on the SDG part. So that's why we had a proposal like this. It could be promoting equality locally and globally. So about women and girls in science, zero discrimination, zero hunger, quality education for all. It doesn't have to be, you know, very, very complex. So that's, we'll share anyway all those themes because we we kind of threw in probably thirty themes out there. So so just to create a reaction, I would say, with you guys.
And again, that's the idea, but we could go, for example, when we did New Rochelle, we we talked about diversity, we talked about sustainability. We talked about gender equality, but then we also talked about the art, you know, the art DNA of the city or sometimes.
To New York City.
Yeah, the.
Major people who have lived there. So there's many ways at one point to actually enhance that and talk about that part too. So that's, we'll, we'll, we'll send that because it was just a shot in the dark, I would say. So a quick idea of what the map could look like and potential walls, which you're probably intrigued, thirty-one we could find in there. So here's kind of the map. So you would see the train station right here. You would see Main Street right here. And I do not remember, but a street, you also have, close to the CVS up there, a few walls. So there's more walls, I would say, than that. You're going to see them individually afterwards. But that is immediate walls, I would say, that are easy to connect and to walk from. So if I go by order, that's kind of the train station. That wall here actually is is actually kind of a cube that actually we could use and paint both sides. The tunnel, that was actually, Jeremy, at that time, we were talking about those two sides. If we go back in town, actually through Main Street, you have on the right side right here. On the other side, top, top right, right here, you have another wall. Then you have that alley, which has two sides, I would say, to it. So I'm walking in the city at the same time. Then, and each time, if it has a star, I would say here, it's more, it's kind of an interesting wall, we think, actually to paint. So that's the other side, I would say, of the one that you just saw, that I couldn't get with Google at that time. On the opposite side of this crossing, you have actually a potential wall here. If we go then to the right side, you have in this little alley here, a big wall, actually, which has two sides to it. You can see actually on the drawing right here. I don't know the streets, you, I apologize. So I'm going to have to. So on the parking lot, just continuing, you have a wall right here also, which would be great, actually, if people park there. In a sense, it's not on the main street, but it still is a place where people will be. Then on the opposite, but there is a tree, so that's why you don't have a star here. The the issue of that one is a bit hidden, I would say. Then still on that parking lot, on the other side, you have another wall here. Then you have, I believe it's Bank of America. You have on the opposite side, the coffee, the coffee shop, which is here. I don't remember exactly which one that was. Potentially, I would say, the school, they allow us to paint on that wall, which is great, by the way, in terms of size. The library, of course, which has a three, three walls right here, which would be a great, a great, a great one too. Going the opposite from the crossing that we were at in between Main Street, going to the station. So we have a wall on the other side, which has greenery around, so it does limit, I would say, the visibility. But on the opposite side, you have that wall, which looks probably ugly to everyone, but we can do something with it with art. Then you have this one right here, which already has, at least on Google, a painting here. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go through them maybe faster. So on the left side right here, then you have on the right side right here, going still on on this street. Then you have this entire house right here, if it's still there. The parking lot of the post office, which has two beautiful walls at the back, which would make a great one. I mean, I can go on and on and I'll share all that. So you will see the thirty-first, that's the CVS. That's the other side of the CVS. That's opposite the CVS. That's your fire station. That's next to your fire station. And we can go on and on and on. So let me, anyways, we we also did the effort of imagining a retro planning. Also looking at dates and the rest. I don't know if that corresponds to what you had imagined, but to give you kind of an idea of how we think. And the idea is before December to kind of, and I believe it's budgets also on your side. So to get budget walls, themes, artists kind of confirmed, so we can book those artists. Because when summer comes, it starts to be very crammed, I would say. Sketch validations, because we do submit for each wall, especially you would validate, of course, for for all of them. And then production dates, inauguration. We imagine May, which would be a great time, we think, just pre-summer on that part. And that's it in a nutshell. Sorry, it's live.
Looks really exciting. You know, I'm going to give Jill credit. Jill had thought of the idea of, we have this fence that borders the the train tracks, that's just an ugly rundown fence. In theory, we could put something there along that wall, make that a wall, if you will, and create some art there. So there's always the opportunity, we could add space as well, because a lot of these places have private, they're private places. And and, you know, one of the things we're dealing with now going forward is rezoning, so we don't know who's going to build what eventually in the year or two to come, which may be an issue.
But we have, we're accustomed, I would say, to that, to the private and public, a public side and dealing directly, I would say, with owners. I mean, at one point, having a contract with them, allowing them to remove the art after a certain number, I mean, all the waivers, insurance, all the rest. That were, it's not our first rodeo, so that we can help, for sure. If that's something, I mean, do do use us on that part because we can, we can jump in and ease, I would say, very fast with a with a few elements. The wall owners, which we're very sensitive to, because at the end, it remains their property, that they need to either sell or repair or whatever at one point. So we are, we are structured on that part.
And it usually, since it increased the value of their of their building, I mean, it's usually, it's a yes or a no. But yeah, we get a lot of yeses because of the type of art we do.
We have a lot of developers who usually like us to come and paint their wall because it does appreciate indeed on that.
We've spoken to a lot of the private owners already, and many of them are actually excited to do something. It's not quite as many walls as you put on there. I didn't even notice we had some of those walls. But but we have spoken to a number of people who who already are pretty excited about the concept of a mural. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, please.
So do you also, do you work with just your artists or do you work with with kind of local, if local artists wanted to do something as well?
So we we work with all artists. We're an open, open platform. We do have, I would say, local artists. It's, again, then afterwards, it's a question of, we do incorporate artists and local artists in some of the big productions we have. So it's going to be depending on size, on the experience they have. It's always, you know, it's always a hard part on the local side. If people have not done murals before or done, don't have, you know, all the experience. So we will review, if you have other artists, I would say, to propose, we will definitely consider and talk with them to see if they're capable. And when I'm saying capable, I'm not meaning that in a bad, bad way. We've had our local artists in towns of Westchester that last minute abandoned the project because they were sitting next to very prominent ones that were going, okay, I'm not putting my art there. More, and that was kind of a drop down. So we don't, we won't also to avoid that kind of a situation where they would not feel comfortable. Or people would just, no, they were, that specific artist I'm thinking about was going, okay, people are going to point at me like I'm the local artist. It's shitty what I'm doing. And that, that's, that's not right. I mean, and even for us, we were not feeling comfortable in putting him in a wrong situation in this part. So, yes, so yes, yes, for a simple answer, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I know that the town would have some control over over the the genre of paintings and murals that we would want. Do we also have any control over the actual paintings that are produced? We would approve sketches?
Yes.
As we said, so yes, this is a must for us, that you approve sketches. It's also very important for us that wall owners also have a kind of a veto right, maybe not, you know, on the theme right because it remains their wall if it's private wall and the rest, and it's important for us. So all that comes, as we explained the first time, as a discussion we have upfront to avoid issues down the line. So we do spend a lot of time with you, you know, talking about the theme, the type of styles that you like. We have a palette of artists, which is, you know, which goes from, and I'm not joking, from Picasso style to actually more abstract or the rest. And and so it's possible for us to kind of put the right artist in front of the right wall, in a sense. That's not too hard.
But yes, you get to say on the theme, we show you the artist, so if really there's something, you can, you can say, oh no, this one doesn't work. But usually does, hopefully, and then the sketch, yes, of course. And and then the app, the content of the app, what we said, the audio, who's going to talk about the audio, et cetera.
Okay, and then we had, you know, we've been looking at at murals in the past and sort of the issue was cost. So what is the, what is the cost to the town to do this?
So.
So well, usually the cost is pretty simple. For a mural, it's going to be twenty thousand dollar. Usually it's more or less what we, what we charge. So it's not very expensive. We don't go crazy, despite the fact that the artists are famous. Just because we know them for a long time, et cetera. That covers everything.
Yeah, let's be clear.
You explained that includes like housing and food and things.
Yeah, everything.
We should explain that because.
Everything, everything.
Say twenty, twenty K, it's everything included.
The flight for the artist to come here, the hotel, the material, really everything.
So, and that's per mural?
Per mural, yes.
And it doesn't matter. I mean, if we have smaller sized walls, it doesn't.
No, actually, we're capable and that surprises everybody because we're capable of doing that even on a twenty-story building. That's actually what surprises, that's why, that's why the developers love us, really. Because that's, it's kind of a, we're a nonprofit, so the idea for us is to do a maximum of walls. So we cap at our cost and then, you know, we kind of play with the rest actually in between.
And to any towns, just really quickly do, let's say we did five. And then we want to do, let's say, a contest with with local artists or, you know, kids in the town, like AP art students to kind of take the five you've done and intersperse more local artists and and local kids doing that. Have towns done that?
So no, so I just want to make sure I understand completely. So we haven't had, we've had towns with students interacting, either as volunteers, either as interviews or photographers or the rest. In terms of painting, you really need to be, I mean, I mean, if you want to be an assistant, for instance, of one of those artists, they have to be pretty skilled, I would say, already, to and have a bit of experience. Now, having additional walls being brought, so New Rochelle is going to do eight more to the eight they already have. They don't have, they had an artist, a wall done by students before us, which is there, which is incorporated. And I think it's a great idea. If if the students feel comfortable, I would say, in a sense, giving, giving a wall or two to them, why not? It's, 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 I think it's also part of giving back and having them express themselves if they feel they can do it.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was talking about.
But we would not, we would not master, I would say, that part on our side or organize it. It would be addition and with pleasure, I would say, as an addition. But for the artists themselves, they work all independently. It's, it's a one woman or one man show per mural.
Okay, so, so I had a question that was actually raised by one of our residents in the chat too, that I was thinking about. Right, we talk a lot about how we like to connect the hamlets of Newcastle. We have the Chapacqua Hamlet, the Millwood Hamlet. And, you know, there's five miles or so in between the two hamlet centers. But I think that that themed installation that had components in both hamlets would be really great way to kind of connect and theme the two parts of our, you know, those two parts of our town.
So I mean, I can react to that. Again, we were shooting in Dirac and coming with with the proposal because we hadn't had that conversation. Of course, because you have multiple, I would say, centers, if you want to connect them, it's possible. Then the only issue I would say in that part is the walkability obviously would not be there because you do have a big distance, I would say, in between them from what I've seen. So that maybe is the hardest part, I would say, on the walkability side. But if if you're comfortable in having murals here and there and people going from one center to the other, yes, of course. Or or, you know, three here, three there, whatever, and be able to to have that narrative. The problem is the break that you'll have in between the two, I would say, in in the artwork, I would say, itself, which has to be organized because people might get lost.
Yeah, unless you have a biking, a biking path between both, or you want to do one or something like that, then it could be.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
I would think we might, if if we decide to go forward to this, we might want to look into doing two artworks. One in Millwood and one in Chapacqua. Both of those hamlets and seeing if there was a way. Both of those hamlets, and seeing if there was a way to conceptually join the two.
Yeah, I would say that would make a lot of sense, in a sense.
Would you be able, I'm sorry, would, would you be able to put us in touch with the, the government people that you worked with in New Rochelle and Larchmont and Amerinac? I'm very interested in how they obtained funding for these projects. I mean, I love the idea of doing two, but I'm just doing the math in my head real quick, and I'm thinking to myself, you know, boy, it would be great if we could just, you know, get some funding to help us to pay the cost of summer, all of this.
Yep.
We, we can only dip into the wall so many times that we do have the money. Summit Greenfield and Chapel Crossing. But to that end, just in terms of, you're talking twenty thousand dollars per mural. When we reference, for example, some of these alleyways, each, each side is twenty grand irrespective of the size?
Yes, yes, it would be, it would be a different art each time. It's, it's kind of a one, one piece.
It's like one sketch, one, one big painting.
If we can connect, I would say, the two, then it would be twenty in a sense, but that needs to be kind of something we can connect to be able to do it at one point. Otherwise, it's kind of a break, I would say, a mindset of the, of the artist. For instance, I can take an example, the one of the library that I showed, which is three sides of walls, it's actually one.
Yeah, it's one, it's three panels, but that's.
We don't own that building. It's okay.
Well, it seems like a fabulous idea for us to chew on. This is really enticing.
Let me ask you one other question. So you, how long do these murals usually last? With, with, I'm, I'm not talking about if somebody decides to paint over it, but in just in general, you know, in terms of, of nature and, and, you know, how they hold up and.
Yeah, so usually they were, they, they stay a very long time, minimum five years. And then after the, I would say, they start to age kind of gracefully. The really, the aging of the, the mural depends more, I would say, on the sun, on the wind, really on the, how much they are exposed, you know, to the, to the, to the weather. And also sometimes to the quality of the wall itself. But most of the time, I mean, we have some artists been here for fifteen, twenty years, you know, and they don't move. It really, it really depends. And the fact also that we use very high quality paint. We are pretty well known for the quality of the paint that we use. Makes also, and novellacy too, makes a big difference, because that's the reason why you, you, if you go to New Rochelle, for example, and you see those murals, you can't tell that they have been done two years ago. It could have been yesterday, would be exactly the same.
So what, what you're gonna see with, with time mainly is, is so the salt, I would say, and the sun are the two main elements that actually attack, I would say, the mural and the colors. So the more vibrant the colors, the more it's gonna fade. So what's gonna, what's gonna happen is with time, it's from a very vibrant color, you'll, you'll get more of a pastel. It still is gonna be the same mural, but you're gonna get more of a vintage touch to it, or, you know, it's gonna age, in a sense. And we kind of like that, actually, in a sense. You do have people who wanna keep the vibrancy and the rest, and ask us to come back and paint. But actually, most of the people that actually we've been painting for like the fact that it becomes a landmark in kind of a historical, if you want, mural by aging. But they don't move. If the wall stands, they're not gonna move.
Yeah.
And do you have any problems with defacement of the artwork?
So we don't? And I'm crossing fingers, I'm saying that, so.
No, surprising. And sometimes, actually, they're not that big, and they're really at the level of people, and still, nobody touches them. I think it's probably due also by the fact that those artists, you know, they come from all around the world, so people, maybe they respect the work, or.
There's a quote, I would say, so you will, you will not see a graffiti artist come and paint, I would say, and graph on, on, deface a, a wall of the artists that we bring. You might have students have fun or whatever, and that, you know, that, that we can't avoid if they, if they start doing it. But, but you won't see any, any organized grafer do it, mainly because, because.
It's a small world.
Yeah, it's a very small world.
All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate this presentation. It's, again, I keep on saying exciting, but that's a fair way to describe it.
Yeah, okay. That's great. Thank you guys so much. We'll be in touch, and, and I will be looking for those contact information. I'm very interested to be able to, yeah, to be able to report back to the board about the funding and if everything got paid. Thank you so much. Again and again, I apologize for the laziness.
Bye bye.
All right, Jill, next.
All right. So I had mentioned to Jeremy earlier that because we went a little bit longer in executive session, I apologize than we intended. I, I lost my, my staff to be able to discuss the sidewalk study. But I think we, we can save it for another time and for the incoming board to, to discuss in detail. So the next thing we've got is a couple of administrative items. There's gonna be an authorization to establish a capital project and budget for our EV chargers that we've talked about. We've got two ten EV chargers coming in. Very excited about them. There're gonna be replacement ones for the ones at the train station. They're also going to be placed at Amsterdam by the electric signs in the South Greeley parking lot. Amsterdam, where else will we put in them?
Millwood Park.
Right, Millwood, I'm sorry, the new Millwood Park has got one, and I thought maybe there was one more.
Amsterdam?
No, I mentioned Amsterdam. Anyway, but, but we're putting them around. We're very excited to be able to, to support the use of EV chargers. And I think the public really likes it as well, so we really feel to be able to do that. Next is, there's just gonna be a resolution that sort of piggybacks onto our establishment of the capital project, just in support of the, our purchase and installation of the EV charging stations that we're purchasing. And we're going to table, there was no action required from the board on the Kinglyhorn final invoice, but we're just gonna table that conversation and based upon all your conversations that the board has had. And that's all I've got for work session. I just have a bookkeeping, a housekeeping sort of matter, which is, when the board met last week, we talked about the fact that we were not gonna be meeting on the twenty third. We were gonna be holding it over. Our next meeting was going to be on the thirtieth. Unfortunately, I needed payment of claims for certain bills to be paid on the twenty third. So I was wondering whether or not three members of the board would be available for a Zoom-only meeting. It can be in the morning.
I'm, I'm available.
I am as well.
Yes, yes. If we did it, what, ten, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, what's best for you guys on the twenty third?
Sorry, in the morning?
Tell me.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually, I just look, I have, I have a trial that morning at nine, starting, I had the wrong date, so I'm not gonna be available.
We could do, what about five o'clock at night?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, evening, evening is much easier for me.
Okay, Jeremy, would five o'clock work? Are you still not sure?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll be fine, that'll be fine.
Okay, so why don't we make it for five o'clock? Okay, Christina, we are gonna have to take a notice as a, as a regular meeting. It's gonna have a single item on it, and that is payment of claims.
Okay. Okay, and it's five o'clock, and what, I'm sorry, what was the date?
On the, next Tuesday. Okay, so that Diana can, can process those, those payments. Okay? And the, the only other thing I wanna mention is, is that we, we learned today that we are the recipients of a really nice donation from Terra Tile. Lisa, you wanna fill us in on it? The board has to accept the, the donation, so that's why I'm raising it tonight.
Uh, yes. So as you know, we, we have been redoing the Chapacola Performing Arts Center a little bit. And part of what we have done is we redid the kitchen, and we made a concession area and a ticket area. And I approached Terra Tile to see if they wanted to donate all or a portion of their, the countertop materials, which are lovely. And we will give them a little plaque at the Performing Arts Center. But, yes, they said yes. So that's, I don't have the exact numbers. Jill, I assume you do?
It's in one of my delicate paperwork here. It was thirty-five hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred and change. Thirty-five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Which is just so great of them.
Yeah, so the, the, the total of, total cost of the countertop is ninety-seven hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents. And Terra Tile has offered a generous donation of thirty-five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to the chat pack. So we would like to be able to accept the donation. They're actually coming on the twenty third to take and.
Template.
Yeah, to do the template. So we wanted to make sure that the acceptance of the donation was okay. Ed, would it be all right if we were to put this on to the thirtieth for acceptance? I just wanted to make sure that the board had no problems with it and a verbal okay to proceed, and then we'll do the FOMO on acceptance on the thirtieth?
Sure, because some of the info will have a resolution drafted.
Terrific. All right, we can do that. Okay, great. And that's all I had for work session. So that was really pleasant news. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So for the motion?
Sure, I move to close the work session and open the town board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Take it away, Jill.
All right, well, do you have any announcements tonight, Jeremy?
I, I do. I do not have a supervisor report as usual, but I do have an announcement. We have feathered friends that like to fly over our duck pond, but now they can walk again, starting tomorrow, as well as our four-legged furry friends and our two-legged resident neighbors. The duck pond is open tomorrow for the bridge, so we're excited to announce that. That's a lot earlier. I think last week, we announced it would be sometime in December.
December.
December, clearly. So we are very excited and extreme thank you to Bart and his crew, to Bob and all the work that they did, town staff, to make it happen. So this is not about the town board. Thank you to all of you for making it happen.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna warn the public. It, it isn't quite as smooth as it used to be, obviously, you know, there, you know, it's been, it's been stabilized and it is safe. We have an engineer's letter that it's perfectly safe. But they're, they're gonna notice a couple of, you know, ripples and bumps along the, the pathway. We know it's there. We've gotta put up signs that just say uneven surfaces, but it's safe to walk on it. We're really thrilled.
And, and if, we were initially discussing a temporary bridge, and if I'm not mistaken, Jill, and this is a misunderstanding, that if there's a storm, we just have to keep an eye on it. It's, it's stable, it's fine, it's perfectly fine, but we just have to make sure we monitor it, too.
Right, right. And in, in case of a storm, people shouldn't be out walking anyway, but certainly, we will, we will close the bridge and, and keep a close eye on it and make sure that none of the floodwaters have, have destabilized, but what we've stabilized thus far, so.
So Jill, are you anticipating that, that we might close it after any big storm events?
We would certainly, yes. The engineers' inspections, yeah, the engineers' inspection specifically alerted us to the fact that if there's going to be heavy rains, you know, floodwaters like what we experienced with Hurricane Ida, that the bridge should be re-inspected before anybody walks on it again. So we will certainly be mindful of that and keeping an eye out. Now, the inspection report's good for a year. During that time, we're going to be very busy taking and rebidding or bidding a replacement bridge with the possibility of relocating it to someplace that will be closer to Douglas Road. Or if we have to replace it where it is right now, installing a temporary bridge. Because to rebuild it, we're gonna have to take it out of commission for three months, and we really don't want people walking in the street again. So we're really gonna have to figure out the best path forward with that. But we will be doing our due diligence, and that we expect that RFP to be out shortly.
Such good news.
Yay, it's a good one.
All right, anything else for you, Jill?
Yep, that's all I've got. Thank you. Oh, I do wanna say that the, the event last week at the Chapacola Performing Arts Center, the US Air Force Band was a rip-roaring success. The weather actually operated after it, the weather cleared, they had about two hundred people show up at the chat pack for the performance. And it was our maiden voyage for our, our epic ambassadors who were ushers at the event. And we're just so thrilled that everything went off without a hitch. And many thanks to John Kuhn and the library for, for co-sponsoring the event with us. It was fabulous. So thank you so much.
All right. If we're all set from this, and maybe public comment, do we have anybody with their hands raised?
Right now? If anybody's interested in speaking, just raise your digital hand. I don't see anyone.
If someone pops in, we'll let them in, but otherwise, let's move the ball forward. Okay, Jill?
Yeah, so the, the next thing that was scheduled on our agenda was the public hearing for the stretch code, but unfortunately, it wasn't properly noticed. So we are gonna be looking for a resolution tonight, Christina, with authorization to set the public hearing for November thirtieth. And we'll make sure it's properly noticed, and we'll have our public hearing at that point. And then we've just got resolutions.
Super. No other issues with the very brief consent agenda as to?
Shall I go ahead? I move to adopt the consent agenda as submitted, consisting of the following authorization to establish capital project and budget EV chargers. Resolution in support of the town of Newcastle's purchase and installation of electric vehicle charging equipment.
Second, anybody?
Again, second, sorry, I didn't realize I was muted.
I don't know if there's an early test release, I was gonna have to second it. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. The, sorry, move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas by agreement for professional consulting services dated April twenty-seventeenth, the contract the town contracted with Boswell Engineering for construction management and inspection services in connection with the downtown infrastructure improvement project for the Chapacola Hamlet. And whereas the town is presently holding retainage on the contract in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars. And whereas, based on Boswell's satisfactory completion of work under the contract, the town engineer has recommended the release of fifty percent of the aforementioned retainage to Boswell. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board authorizes and directs the town controller to issue a payment of fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars to Boswell Engineering, Inc., for professional services rendered pursuant to the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay. Whereas on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, the town commenced a proceeding captioned Town of Newcastle versus Unsafe Building. It was known as proceeding seeking an order pursuant to New York Town Law one thirty-sixteen and Town Code forty-eight dash twenty-two E authorizing the demolition and removal of an unsafe building located at nine Gray Rock Park Lane, the unsafe building. And whereas by decision and order dated August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, the court granted the town's petition in its entirety. And whereas by stipulation of settlement entered on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, the parties agreed to terms and conditions for the rehabilitation and repair of the unsafe building. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Town Code forty-eight dash twenty-two G, the town board hereby authorizes and directs the town assessor to assess the real property that is the site of the unsafe building, section ninety-three dot six, block two, lot nineteen, Town of Newcastle, for the costs and expenses incurred in the proceeding in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, which sum consists of fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars for legal fees and dispersments, and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for architectural services. And be it further resolved that if such, such costs and expenses are not paid at or prior to the levy of the next succeeding town tax, same shall be extended by the town supervisor against the subject real property in addition to the town tax to be levied thereon.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And then there are a couple of other resolutions that came through on.
Yeah, I have, I have those, I have those pulled up. I moved.
I think there's three or four.
Yeah, there's like four or something. I have them, I have them. I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of laborer zero four twenty-five dash oh five within the Department of Public Works at the annual salary ranging from forty-eight thousand fifty-five dollars and thirty-one cents to sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents to be effective January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Are we doing these charges tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so hereby resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby adopts the charges and specifications against employee number two four one nine dated September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as issued by the town administrator without making any determination or findings, and further appoints Kenneth Bernstein, Esquire of Hyde Park, New York, as a hearing officer pursuant to section seventy-five of the New York State Civil Service Law. as a hearing officer pursuant to section seventy five of the New York State Civil Service Law with respect to such charges and specifications and any amendments made there too, and hereby direct said hearing officer to conduct a hearing, make findings of fact and issue a recommendation to the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay, and uh whereas the town board of the Town of Newcastle has appointed Kenneth Bernstein Esquire as a hearing officer pursuant to section seventy five of the Civil Service Law, told to hearing and make recommendations. And whereas said hearing officer will be carrying out a function for the town board that is required by law. Now therefore be it resolved that Kenneth Bernstein Esquire shall be compensated at a rate not to exceed a hundred and eighty five dollars per hour for services rendered. And be it further resolved, the town board of the Town of Newcastle shall indemnify and hold Kenneth Bernstein harmless from any claims arising out of his appointment and services hearing officer, and shall provide Kenneth Bernstein legal representation and assume all costs with respect to any such claims provided that Kenneth Bernstein Esquire provides notice of any such claims in writing to the town clerk within ten days of receipt of same and cooperates, cooperates fully with the town in the defense thereof.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We have two more. We have, um, yeah, one from more with regard to the professional bid services and then one for setting the public hearing. It should be in your email.
Yep, I got them. Um, resolve that based upon the recommendation of town staff, the town board hereby rejects the single bid received from Barton and legit, I can never.
Genius.
Genius. I can never pronounce that. On the Douglas Road Walkway feasibility study, while the town board assesses its options and decides whether to rebid the work.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I think the last one, I move to set a public hearing on Tuesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty one at seven PM. Or soon thereafter as practicable on a local law which adopts the New York Stretch Energy Code twenty twenty as the Town of Newcastle Energy Code and amending the Green Building Code to resolve any conflicts with the Energy Code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else?
I think that's it.
Well, this is, this is my favorite part because there's three of us, so any one of us can hold us hostage and keep us here.
I move to adjourn.
Again.
I use my power. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Thank you so much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye now.